Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Paramount Planning Commission. Let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Abrego. Commissioner Bautista.
Present.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Chair Weisenberger.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Abrego.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bautista.
Present.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, our first item here is the Alt Air Paramount LLC. The purpose for this special meeting. Number 1A, Resolution Number 22012, recommending approval to the City Council of amended conditional use permit number 757 and to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report related to the Alt Air Paramount LLC refinery conversion project at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 Zone. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We are still working with World Energy on several conditions that we're finalizing. So what we're recommending to you this evening is to open the public hearing on both items to take public comment this evening. There won't be any presentation. Then we're going to recommend that you continue the public hearings to March 14th, at which time there will be a presentation and we will take testimony in favor and opposed. But this evening, we are recommending that anybody in the audience that wants to speak, who cannot be here on March 14th, that they be allowed to speak either in favor or opposed.
Okay, very good. So in that case, I guess we'll open the public hearing.
And I do have some speaker cards, and then we also have some email comments that I can read. Would you like me to do the email ones first?
Sure. Thank you, John.
Okay, great. Okay, so we've got a couple that I'll just read into the record. My name is Diane Martinez. I'm the former mayor of our beautiful city, and I presently serve on the Paramount Unified School District Board of Trustees. I am in favor of Alt Air Renewable Fuels Conversion Project. This conversion will provide the Paramount community and the surrounding region with cleaner air and lower greenhouse gas emissions. The project will result in reductions of sulfur oxides, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and particulate matter. There are many benefits. The community would benefit from this conversion. The community would benefit from an increase of high-paying green jobs and a focus on local hiring, a future innovation center to highlight energy innovations in collaboration with local schools and the Paramount community, increased support of local and community programs by World Energy, increased local business sales tax revenue. The City of Paramount will get an allocation of property tax paid on the Paramount plant. I commend the city for conducting a very thorough environmental review under CEQA to analyze the benefits and potential impacts of the project. It's exciting to have a clean energy facility featuring the world's first commercial production facility, a sustainable aviation fuel right here in the City of Paramount. Therefore, I urge the Planning Commission to approve the amended conditional use permit and to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report. Thank you. The next letter that we received is from Mario Suáles. Dear Mr. Carver, as a resident of Paramount, I am pleased to submit this letter in support of the Alt Air World Energy Renewable Fuels Conversion Project and the city's approval of the draft subsequent environmental impact report and conditional use permit. I believe the city has conducted a thorough environmental review under CEQA to analyze the benefits and potential impacts of the project for our community. I have lived and still have family in Linwood, who we are proud Hispanics neighboring Paramount for the past 22 years, and support this project to help create jobs and help the community/families have good-paying jobs and with good benefits. The Paramount facility, previously a petroleum refinery, has received significant upgrades and is a far cleaner plant under World Energy's ownership. World Energy is converting a former asphalt crude oil refinery into a 100% renewable fuels production facility, one of the cleanest fuel refineries in the world. I recognize the need for low-carbon fuels produced by World Energy at its Paramount facility to address both climate change and local air pollution. I am proud to have these cleaner renewable fuels, such as sustainable aviation fuel, be developed in Paramount. I appreciate World Energy's excellent safety record operating the facility. I support the Alt Air World Energy Renewable Fuels Conversion Project as it will support our local economy by bringing high-paying jobs close to our homes. We know this project is cleaner for Paramount than what has been at the location for nearly a century. In particular, the overall cancer risk in our community will decline due to the World Energy project. I appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment in writing and at upcoming public meetings organized by the city. Thank you for considering our remarks as a part of the public comment on this essential clean energy project. The next letter that we have is from Eddie Riveo, and his letter says, Dear Mr. Carver, as a resident of Paramount, I am pleased to submit this letter in support of the Alt Air World Energy Renewable Fuels Project and the city's approval of the draft subsequent environmental impact report and conditional use permit. I believe the city has conducted a thorough environmental review under CEQA to analyze the benefits and potential impacts of the project for our community. My family and I are new residents in the City of Bellflower, living here a little over a year. We understand the importance of good-paying jobs that provide health care benefits for all who work there and their families. These much-needed jobs create apprenticeship opportunities, allowing men and women to join and learn new skills while on the job. The possibility of working close to home also means less time commuting long distances on congested freeways. Living here, working here provides quality time for our family, allowing me to participate in family activities like soccer practices and games for my girls. The Paramount facility, previously a petroleum refinery, has received significant upgrades and is a far cleaner plant under World Energy's ownership. World Energy is converting a former asphalt crude oil refinery into a 100% renewable fuels production facility, one of the cleanest fuel refineries in the world. I recognize the need for low-carbon fuels produced by World Energy at its Paramount facility to address both climate change and local air pollution. I am proud to have these cleaner renewable fuels, such as sustainable aviation fuel, be developed in Paramount. I appreciate World Energy's excellent safety record operating the facility. I support the Alt World Energy Renewable Fuels Conversion Project as it will support our local economy by bringing high-paying jobs close to our homes. We know this project is cleaner for Paramount than what has been at the location for nearly a century. In particular, the overall cancer risk in our community will decline due to the World Energy project. I appreciate the opportunity to provide public comment in writing and at upcoming public meetings organized by the city. Thank you for considering our remarks as part of the public record on this essential clean energy project. The next email we received is from Guadalupe Velazquez, and she says that received the public notice for the referenced above. The notice mentions that the Planning Commission will consider a subsequent CEQA. As a resident and property owner at 14819 Downey Avenue, Unit 119, Paramount 90723, I am definitely affected by this project. My property is located directly across the plant. In case the previous CEQA report failed to include, there is constant high level of chemical smell in the air and a high level of particles in the air that when they fall on the ground, they look like ash, but they do not feel like ash. At night, the burning flame is turned up that the heat brightly radiates and heats the glass of my windows. I hope the Planning Commission considers the above when approving the plant's request. The next one is a little bit longer, so give me a couple of minutes to read that.
Better get some water, anyway.
Okay. Hello, I am a resident of the Cinderella Mobile Home Park Community located at 8600 Contreras Street, Paramount, California 90723, and would like to relate my concerns regarding the proposed project because the refinery abuts our property and my house is located at the property line. We are concerned about the impact on the greater community as well because this refinery is located in the midst of a residential neighborhood and is very close proximity to two schools, Paramount High School and Wertz Elementary School. I was not able to attend the previous meetings, but received information from attendees that the refinery is planning to process non-petroleum-based products that include propane and hydrogen fuels, and we feel the extreme volatility of these fuels pose a danger to the community. In fact, we are aware of at least one incident involving the mishandling of hydrogen that was reported in a residential area on Somerset Avenue late last year. Our concerns include, one, air quality. Many residents of the Cinderella Mobile Home Park Community have experienced worsening, exacerbation, or a new onset of respiratory issues. Since I moved to this property in 2019, I have had constant allergic symptoms and a chronic cough that was not preexisting prior to moving here. This has been notable. Also, we are concerned that the increase in heavy construction equipment is negatively impacting air quality and will be worsened with the planned project and are opposed to any projects that will contribute to this. We are concerned about noxious odors from unknown sources that residents have witnessed the refinery attempting to conceal by releasing some type of deodorizing agent into the air. We are also concerned about the huge amounts of dust generated by construction at the refinery and what the chemical components of that dust might be. Number two, environmental impact on wildlife. Attendees at the last meeting mentioned that it was reported that wildlife in the area might be impacted. This is a concern as residents of our community have witnessed a definite decrease in birds that previously frequented the trees, and there have been steadily decreasing sightings of squirrels, raccoons, and possums over approximately a two-year period. Currently, we do not see any wildlife in the park and very few birds. Number three, environmental impact of subterranean pipelines. We are opposed to the construction of underground fuel conveyances in and around our community and in a residential area due to the possible impact on water quality, risk of environmental damage due to fuel spill, and fire danger in an earthquake as there are high voltage lines that traverse the vicinity of the refinery and neighborhood. Number four, impacts on local traffic. The scheduling of train transit during peak commute hours is negatively affecting commuters. The trains cross Downey Avenue near Contreras during peak commute hours, causing traffic delays and congestion. Wait times can be 10 to 15 minutes. We would like to suggest that train transit hours be adjusted so as not to impact traffic. Number five, tree hazard. There are trees all along the property line with our community that are 50-plus feet in height. We feel that the height of these trees would present a hazard to our community during an earthquake, high winds, or fire. They also negatively impact the residents who live in proximity to the trees. The leaf fall can and has caused damage to roofs and requires frequent removal from the roof and ground to avoid rot, mildew, or attraction of rodents. Thus, the residents of this side of the park have an added financial responsibility and risk to property and person that other residents in the park do not have. We feel this is unfair and that the refinery should bear responsibility for maintenance of the trees, not the residents or park management. Noise pollution, number six. The refinery currently operates very early morning and sometimes late into night, creating a disruptive noise level to residents. We are concerned that the proposed construction project will contribute greatly to this and are opposed to any construction plans that will increase the noise level at the refinery. Number seven, water management. Although unrelated to the proposed project, we are concerned that the refinery is not practicing appropriate water conservation measures and would like the refinery to be aware of this. The sprinklers on Contreras and Downey Avenue do not seem to be properly configured and deposit a large amount of water onto the sidewalk with a large amount of runoff. We have also observed that the sprinklers deploy during the heat of the day and even after rain. We appreciate the opportunity to provide feedback. We sincerely hope you will give merit and appropriate consideration to our concerns. Best regards, Linda Morrison. And then we have two that have requested that we call them. So John King is going to do that for us.
Hello?
Oh, hi, is this Gus? Augustine, excuse me?
Yes. Yeah, this is Gus. Hi.
Great. This is John King with the City of Paramount, and we're live with the --
Oh, my God.
Hello. We're with the Planning Commission meeting, and we understand that you would have some comments you'd like to speak into the record. So you have three minutes, starting now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, John. Well, my name is Gus Exiga, and I've been -- I live in Bellflower right now, but I grew up in Paramount since 1975. But we've been doing business as an owner since 1999, so I've been living here for over 40 -- doing business for over 42 years. And I've been doing business here for a long time, and I think if we -- if the Planning Commission approves that the condition I just permitted and that -- and to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report, it's going to be really good for the environment because the air is going to be a lot cleaner, and there's going to be a lot of new jobs for the city of Paramount. It's going to be good for everybody. And I think it's going to help a lot of the environment and it's going to help everybody here in Paramount as well. So hopefully, we get approved and everything goes well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, hello.
Oh, hello, is this Alfred Basara Jr.?
Speaking.
Hello, sir. This is John King. I'm with the City of Paramount, and I'm live with the Planning Commission in the public hearing. We understand that you'd like to provide comments, and you have three minutes to do so, starting right now. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you so, so much. Good afternoon, everyone. Speaking today in support of the Commission granting the conditional use permit and certifying the environmental impact report. You know, we're living in a different world. Years ago, energy is more precious, fuels becoming more and more expensive. As a nearby resident of the Clean Air Facility, I was aware of the Metro project, and I had been afraid of the possibility that the facility could be a potential terror target. And that's how I developed a relationship with the team at World Energy, and they were able to go and show me how they've taken safeguards to protect us from some kind of attack like that. Well, during my tours there, and as a double bachelor's of chemistry and biochemistry, I became more and more curious. Over the two visits that I took to go and understand more about their operations, I got to see what they do, and I found that World Energy's output is cleaner than the previous businesses that were at the facility. I can't remember the last time that I noticed a flare, like in the '90s. I remember that the City of Paramount and the facility was in the news for a huge flare up and the smoke, and it was all over into my neighborhood, just a block south of the facility. Now, it's been such smooth sailing. It's amazing what they've done, and I also noticed their business model where they are creating different clean fuels, like aviation fuel from animal tallow. You know, it didn't take me long with my background to see how that would positively impact us as a community, considering that we have all these freeways and the LAX light path that we'd be using these fuels, you know, in a way where they wouldn't have to go and spout out all the hazardous byproducts. And those byproducts and the processes of crude oil refineries are going to be avoided by approving this permit and certifying the EIR. So I'm really excited about this opportunity here because my mom, she passed away from cancer, and I mean, I don't know if it was the previous owner's fault for having a lot of those fumes, but I know that Clean Air is doing a great job of reducing that, making it -- making their positive contribution to the community.
I'm sorry, sir, you have 15 seconds left.
So they're helping out with taxes, scholarships, more jobs. I really implore this Commission to go and do the right thing and help this community grow further, and it's with Clean Air as the great neighbor that they are in partnership with Paramount. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have a number of speaker cards. The first one is from Eileen Chambers. Could you -- Eileen, turn the mic on. Thank you.
You have to start my three minutes over. My name is Eileen Chambers, 14833 Lakewood Boulevard, Mustang Country. I see a lot of people here tonight who are recognizing the end result. I would like to talk about the process. That's the process that hurts me the most. I'm bordered on three sides by the refinery, and construction process, which is above the AQMD, is my worst nightmare. Three years of construction will devastate my business, my tenants, and their business. The refinery states it's going to have 129 trucks, dirt haulers, per day for a whole year leaving the refinery. They're going to move 2,000 metric tons of contaminated soil per day. In the second year, they're going to have 144 dirt haulers per day. They're going to build a new building south of me that's going to house construction, repair, warehousing, and new offices and repair shops. In addition to that, they're going to build an electrical substation, a new substation. This substation is going to provide transformers that will feed three distribution centers. Electrical usage is going to increase from 2 megawatts to 29 megawatts. I don't think the purpose of this meeting is to decide whether or not Alt Air can produce biofuel. I think we're all in favor of cleaner fuel. My problem is how you get there. How can you do the right thing if you're going to deliver that clean new fuel by truck? 540 trucks a day in the end result. And from what I've seen of tanker trucks, those are going to be doubles. That's a lot of trucks. So this Commission gets to decide which avenue they take, whether it's pipeline, which is recommended in the EIR, or whether it's by truck. I hope you decide on the pipeline because you get to choose whether to issue the CUP. You also get to decide whether or not you're going to grant this own variance. Paramount and World Energy has a great opportunity here, but they also have a great obligation. So if you choose the pipeline, I urge you to choose the pipeline. I hope that Alt Air will honor their promises set forth by the AQMD to protect as best they can those of us who live and work on the border of the refinery.
Mr. Chair, the next speaker is Marcelina Bridges.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Marcelina Garcia-Bridges, and I am a lifelong resident of Paramount. I'm also a volunteer for the American Cancer Society. Over the nine-plus years that I have been involved in community outreach, we as a community have pushed for solutions for better air quality within our city limits and beyond. As a community resident, I have been witness to the challenges the city has faced when it comes to reducing its own carbon footprint on our planet. Tonight, I am here in support of the World Energy Renewable Fuels Conversion Project, where they will transition the facility from a petroleum and asphalt refinery into a renewable energy production site. Projects like this show a desire to decrease carcinogenic risk factors and improve health equity in our community. World Energy's low-carbon fuels will reduce harmful diesel exhaust, significantly lower sulfur oxides, nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and particulate matter, and reduce odors generated by the facility, produce renewable fuels resulting in lower greenhouse gas emissions, not to mention the benefit our city will see with this project, including overall quality of life, direct investments in the City of Paramount, increase of full-time high-paying jobs in the city, and decrease cancer risk as a direct result of this project. As a member of the community, a caretaker, and a family member of three cancer survivors, both my siblings and my mom, I appreciate the opportunity to provide my feedback. Thank you for considering my opinion on this matter.
Mr. Chair, next we have Barbara Cresson.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. I want to thank you for allowing everyone a chance to speak their mind about the World Energy Renewable Fuels Project. As a stakeholder in the City of Paramount, we are proud to see and support this cutting-edge project as we begin to see new ways to provide fuel that is greener and safer for our community. This project has already caught the attention of environmental groups from around the world. They're excited to see this conversion project come to pass and how it will pave the way for future projects everywhere. I want to point out that this project will have a positive effect on our community because the conversion will be eliminating the refining of crude oil at the refinery while also generating high-quality jobs. It will reduce the dependency on fossil fuels, which we all know is a necessary transition. It will provide fuel that meets the requirements of the CARB's Low Carb Fuel Standard and reduce the carb intensity of fuels in California. It will supply fuel that will reduce the individual trucks and airplane emissions, and it will be lowering the daily limit of production for the plant. World Energy has made a substantial commitment to this community and continues to contribute to scholarships, internships, and events that enrich our community, as well as working hard on the environment. We request that the Planning Commission approve and amend the conditional use permit and to certify the final subsequent environmental impact report, the SEIR. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next -- I'm sorry, this one's a little hard to read. Somebody that lives on Contreras, 8600 Contreras. I think the last name, INCE.
Hi, my name is Janet Ince, and I'm the manager at Cinderella Mobile Home Community on Contreras, and our property runs along the whole backside of World Energy. And I want to thank the city and the City Council for letting me speak and for considering this project. I know you -- we hear a lot about the trees or the animals or different things, but I wanted to keep our eye on the ball and just talk about what is proposed. wanted to keep our eye on the ball and just talk about what is proposed, the pros and cons of that. I think we should, well, sorry, never mind. Whether or not this conditional permit is passed, we know that Paramount Petroleum is going to be there, World Energy is going to be there. It's a matter of what they produce. If we're going to go back to the older days when they produced a lot of unhealthier things before the conversion, I don't want to go back there. I want to see renewable energy, I want to see the conversion take place. It's going to eliminate a lot of the sulfur nitrogen oxides, the particulates, carbon monoxide, and instead of making propane with petroleum, excuse me, instead of making propane, producing renewable propane instead of petroleum propane and hydrogen from natural gas instead of extracting it from petroleum products, all of which are less dangerous to us. And on a personal note, they've been very good neighbors for the fifteen years that I've been there. They've addressed all of our concerns when we've had them and helped us in many ways. So I think it's a healthier step for all of us and I'm in favor of, of the conversion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Chris Hammond?
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commission. My name is Chris Hannan. On behalf of the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, our forty-eight affiliates and the 140,000 men and women that they represent, I ask you to approve the conditional use permit, recommend to the city council to approve all the variants. This, this, this project is absolutely needed. It's absolutely needed for our membership, to give them a place to go to work, to give the new apprentices a place to start their career, for local residents to have industry to work in. This area's been devastated by the shutdown of the aviation industry and we haven't recovered those jobs. This is a project that's going to create sustainable fuels, that's going to help us clean our environment, it's going to help our area remain competitive and allow us to have good jobs and a cleaner environment. I urge you on behalf of all of our members to approve the project. World Energy has agreed to use the most skilled, trained men and women in construction, the safest, most productive workforce, to get it done with the least amount of impact and the most efficient time schedule and the safest operation. So thank you again for your consideration.
Next we have Ramon Waddes.
My brothers and sisters please stand up, Local 11. Hi, my name is Ramon Waddes. Thank you all for letting me speak, us all speak. I've been a resident of Paramount since 69. I've never worked in the City of Paramount and this project is going to be good for everybody here in the City of Paramount and for us union brothers and sisters. And I'm real close to retiring and I would like to retire in the city that I grew up in. So, you know, hope we pass it now. I know this company is real good for everything, the environment, it'd be a lot better than the refineries, other refineries that I've seen and worked at. So I hope with your approval we get passed and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Next we have Anna Bardalis.
Hello, my name is Anna Bardalis, card number 8459674. I'm with IBW Local 11. I've been a Paramount resident for the past fifteen years and I have family who have been Paramount residents their whole entire lives and who are still living here. I must express how I strongly believe the New World Energy Clean Fuels Project will not only help deliver ever better solutions to those leading the push to net-zero carbon transport by producing clean renewable energy, but I personally feel by hiring union labor, you're supporting the Paramount community by employing Paramount residents and keeping your local economy stimulated. Not only does our economy, not only does our local union provide a great hourly pay, but they have also fought for our first-class benefit package, which includes a pension, retirement, annuity, and health benefits, just to name a few. Being a mother of four, these benefits provide security for me and my family's present and future. I have worked non-union and know that these kinds of benefits are not promised and often need to be negotiated by the individual worker. I have also noticed how the union and union trades provide a safe workplace for me to be able to work my hours and go home safe to my family. Paramount residents are embedded in the IBW Local 11 and I could proudly say that we want to see our City of Paramount and the New World Energy Clean Fuels Project be approved. Thank you.
And the last card that we have is from Richard Castle.
Hi, my name's Richard Castle. I still live at 16418 Downey Avenue, Paramount, California. I've been there for over fifty years. I, I grew up here, went to Mokler, went to Alondra, went to Paramount High School, graduated class eighty-four. Went in the military after that, served my country. I've lived here over fifty years and to see this project from the old sulfur burning, I've worked in refineries over the years, twenty-two years in the union. We're very high skilled craftsmen. We deal with safety first. We don't compromise. We do great, efficient job and we, we love the community, Paramount. I love the community of Paramount. I raised my kids here. I have, well, we have three generations that graduated from Paramount High School. So now I've got my grandkids here. So I hope you approve the project for a clean energy because it's something beneficial for the city, not only financially, but for the long run. Because it's going to have cleaner air, we're going to have a better process than the old process when, yeah, we used to see that flare up real bad and everything that's contaminated from it. But now clean, clean energies come in here, they're saying, okay, we're going to keep this clean. We're going to do renewable energies and they're going to produce energy through the refinery that will help reduce our costs. It should help reduce the cost of energy in the City of Paramount. So I thank you for your time.
That was it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do we have any rebuttal tonight from the applicant? No? Okay, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wouldn't close the public hearing, I would just continue this matter because there may be more public hearing at the next meeting that you have. So we want to keep that open.
Okay.
So at this point, it would be a motion to continue the public hearing and this application to the March 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Very good. Let's, let's, let's make a motion to that effect there.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Here.
Commissioner Sparza?
Here.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, so, John, is there, what else is there for tonight then?
Right, so item B would be the zone variance, so to open the public hearing and see if anybody wants to testify.
Okay, so item B then is Resolution Number 22-011. And this is recommending approval to the city council of Zone Variance Number 409, a request by Alt Air Paramount LLC for a variance to exceed the 55-foot height limit to allow the installation of various pieces of equipment related to the Alt Air Paramount LLC refinery Conversion Project at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 Zone.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, this would also be continued to the March 14th Planning Commission meeting, correct?
Yes. Okay, good. So then we will open the public hearing for this matter then tonight.
And we don't have any cards for this?
No cards.
No speaker cards.
Okay, then I guess we'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Continue.
We won't close the public hearing. Okay, we're going to, that's right, continue the public hearing until our March 14th meeting.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Here.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, then, do we have any comments tonight from our city attorney?
Actually, yes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to let the Commission know that the, two council meetings ago, the city attorney's office presented a very comprehensive presentation to the city council regarding the street racing efforts that the city's been doing since the city council adopted two very comprehensive ordinances regarding street racing and exhibition of speed and also spectator fines. And so what we did is that we had members from all the departments that are involved in this to give a presentation to the council and we believe that this has turned into a very successful program. We have a, over twelve, thirteen cars that have been the subject of seizure. And what they typically do is they enter into stipulated judgments and they agree to have their car back, in which case they have to pay certain fines. And then they sign an agreement that for five years, if they get caught again, that the City of Paramount has the right to confiscate that car without any hearing whatsoever. And so we've had a number of people that have entered into those stipulated judgments. To date, we've had no repeat offenders as a result of that. And in fact, we get, we have three more down the pike that we're dealing with. And we find that with the help of the Sheriff's Department, the Deputy DA, Public Works, and our office, we've been able to really implement what we think is a very successful program. The PowerPoint presentation was very extensive. If any of you would like a copy of the PowerPoint, please email me directly and I'll be more than happy to email that to you and then you can look through it at your own leisure and see how far we, where we've came, where we've come, and where we're going to be going. So that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you. Any other, let's see, Commissioners, any comments tonight?
No comment?
No?
Good audio.
Staff?
No comments.
Okay, in that case, we will, let's see, we will adjourn this meeting. We're going to continue this on the 14th, but we have our next regular Planning Commission meeting on March 8th.
Yes.